Quick.
Yeah.
I was working on the outside of my house trying to just winterize it and clean up. After going door to door for three hours.
Oh geez.
About the day. Heavy lifting, I'm like. He's a boy toy. Only a couple of times a year. Time it was that heavy to fill the hay. Cause they were all, they were all wet from last time.
Geez.
Thanks. Yeah. So nice having Vanessa and Angela.
Yeah.
And they're decorating expertise, cause I'd be like, yeah, throw this stuff on there. I'm gonna thank you. So how are you doing?
Good, it's just very draining.
Yeah. But it was very hard for you.
Yeah, it's tough, it didn't bridge us up.
Yeah.
All the other incidents, same with these guys and stuff, it's even during that they had to keep going, there's other calls, it's really not even stopping.
Yeah. These people, like, how hard it is. Before you do something, just think. Before you do something.
The world would be on our backs. That's the case.
Mm-hmm. There's only three of us then. We could need a mic.
They gotta record.
Oh. Good evening. Yeah, just think, this is your second to last meeting. I'm surprised you haven't been doing the happy dance coming in, but you're holding that off for next, for next month.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Plymouth Township Council, November tenth, twenty twenty-five. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
So the allegiance stood the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of announcements. Council met in an executive session on November fifth, twenty twenty-five, to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, potential litigation matters, and purchase lease of real property. Next item, I would like our police chief, John Mearsiades. He has some remarks regarding the incident that occurred on Friday, October the twenty-fourth, where two of our officers were injured in the line of duty and were hospitalized.
Thank you. On October twenty-fourth, Dalton Lee Janizek was arrested for the attempted murder of two of our police officers, as well as being charged with three counts of felony aggravated assault. Although I cannot comment on the specifics of the case due to the district attorney's ongoing investigation, I am in awe of our officers' bravery and grateful for the swift end to the bloodshed. The heroics of that day is not limited to a few officers, but extend to all those who shared the horror of that assault. While the officers still have a hard road ahead and are home healing with family by their side, I intend to pay proper tribute to all involved in the months to come. On behalf of our officers, I thank our emergency service partners for their ongoing alliance, as well as the outpouring of support shared by our residents and business community. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, and I think almost everybody remembers that day, it's very fresh in our minds, and certainly they were brave, and certainly all of our officers reacted so professionally that the person who stands accused right now actually survived the incident without harm from police. That's a tribute to professionalism of our department, but also our hearts go out to the injured officers, as well as all of you who have to witness and be there for them and their families. Agenda indicates that the next item is a presentation of the twenty twenty-six budget. I think we're gonna hold that until just before public comment, so that it'll be fresh in everyone's mind if they have comment. And we will now move to our action items. First item. I move that Township Council adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-three, recognizing Estelle Ronderas for her service on the Historical Architectural Review Board, per the attachment, and grateful recognition of her generous and outstanding service and contributions rendered as a member of the Historical Architectural Review Board. Estelle Ronderas served Plymouth Township with commitment and dedication by volunteering her time to the Historical Architectural Review Board during the period extending from January twenty twenty-three through September twenty twenty-five. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby expresses its appreciation to Estelle Ronderas. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Estelle Ronderas. Presented and approved at a duly convened meeting of Plymouth Township Council, conducted on this tenth day of November twenty twenty-five by Plymouth Township Council. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any comments or questions from the members of council?
Yeah, I'd like to just say something really quick. I know that that resolution is far more articulate than what I'm gonna come up with on the spot right now, but I'd just like to say thank you, even though Estelle's, I don't think Estelle's here right now. It was wonderful working with her on the Historical Architectural Review Board, and I'll be sad and scared of it.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Nelson is our liaison to that board. All right, any further comments? Hearing non will take a roll call vote. All vote, Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. I move that Township Council approve the meeting minutes for October sixth, twenty twenty-five, council workshop, and October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any comments or questions from council? Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next action item, I move that Township Council approve the October twenty twenty-five departmental reports and schedule of bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney, any comments or questions from council or from the members of the public? Vote, Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Our next item, a motion to approve change order number two by Mr. Whitney.
I move that Township Council approve change order number two, Harmonville Fire Company Station Two rebuild construction project in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents.
By Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any comments or questions from council or from members of the public? Hearing non will take a roll call vote, Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item, a motion to approve an escrow relief for twenty-six twenty-two Butler Pike by Ms. Visio.
I move that Township Council approve escrow release number eight for twenty-six twenty-two Butler Pike in the amount of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents for an attachment which I will read.
I have a motion by Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson, Ms. Visio, would you like to read the escrow release, please?
I have a letter from Mr. Lonnie Manai regarding the property at twenty-six twenty-two Butler Pike. Based on field observations of the work completed to date, it was found that sufficient work was completed to release the amount of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. By releasing that amount, the total account balance in escrow for the project is reduced to twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-nine cents.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about this change, escrow release? All right, hearing non will now move to a roll call vote, Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And next, we have our very first traffic calming resolution. By Mr. Whitney.
I move that Township Council adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four, traffic calming recommendations for New Hope Street, per the attachment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Explain it before we read it.
Love to, thank you.
All right, this is our very first traffic calming recommendation, and just so that people will understand how we went about it, we won't do this every time, but how we went about it, what was involved, and then following that, Mr. Whitney will read the actual resolution. So, Mr. West, please.
Thank you. Yes, and so if you remember in July, excuse me, council passed a traffic calming policy in which it defined the process for residents to request traffic calming devices. And so I am pleased to present to council this evening our very first traffic calming application that was submitted by resident Ellen O'Hara, who is also in attendance this evening. I just wanted to give you an, kind of an outline of the process, and I just really appreciate Ms. O'Hara being a part of this process, she was a great first applicant and really helped us learn the process. And I just wanted to say thank you for your patience and your willingness to help us through this process. We, if you look in the meeting packet, there is an application for a traffic calming inquiry request. That was the original one that was posted, that was part of the traffic calming policy. If you remember when we passed this policy, I stated that there's a good chance that we might need to update the process once we get in to a couple of these applications. Well, I'm gonna say, we have redone the application, because what we found was that it was a little clunky for us to navigate. And it was, one of the feedbacks that we've heard from Ms. O'Hara was that it was difficult to understand the process at which point she needed to be interacting with. So, we simplified it to one sheet, that one sheet then is the only thing that gets submitted to the township. Once the township receives that application, we will process it and make sure that it meets all of the criteria for a street to be eligible for a traffic calming. There are six conditions as defined in the traffic calming policy. First condition is that it must be in an area zoned residential. Second condition, the street is owned and maintained by the township. Third, majority of the properties along the street are residences, parks, and/or schools. Condition four, the street is not in an alley. Number five, block is at least three hundred feet in length, and the road grade is eight percent or less. Last condition, the eighty-fifth percentile speed is in excess of ten miles per hour over the posted speed limit for the preceding three-month time period. That's an important detail. So in order for us to process a recommendation for implementation, an application has to meet all of those conditions. I'm pleased to make this recommendation to council that this first application met all six conditions. And our recommendation, so you can see that in the meeting packet as well, you're gonna see the same internal use form that we're using, and you're gonna see it filled out, because what we like to do is to identify what all of those details are, document it, and then provide that to the applicant. And then the next step is to schedule a meeting with the applicant to review our recommendations. Those recommendations are then transformed into the resolution, which is before you this evening. And that's it, that's in it, that's the process in a nutshell. And also included in this process is the opportunity for the applicant to provide public comment prior to council considering taking action.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments? I would like to ask Mr. Whitney on what exactly the recommendation is, and I really appreciate you doing that, Township Manager West, because, you know, it really was a process, and I really thank Ms. O'Hara for helping all of us through that, and of course, everybody else that's involved in that, it's, our police are involved in collecting data, our Public Works is involved, cause the Township Road, and what recommendations would work, what would be the cost, those kinds of things. So, that's everything that went into it, the Township all worked together, the staff, to make this happen. Mr. Whitney, would you please read the first resolution for traffic calming?
A resolution of the Township of Plymouth, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the adoption of a traffic calming plan for speed on New Hope Street, road between Plymouth Road and Belvoir Road pursuant to the Plymouth Township Traffic Calming Policy. Whereas Plymouth Township is a home rule municipality organized and existing under the laws of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, with its offices at seven hundred Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, Pennsylvania, one nine four six two, and whereas pursuant to section three oh one of the Home Rule Charter, all powers of the Township are vested in and exercised by a council, including the power to make and adopt ordinances and resolutions consistent with the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth and the Home Rule Charter. And whereas on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Council of Plymouth Township adopted a traffic calming policy, and whereas pursuant to the traffic calming policy of the Council of Plymouth Township has determined there is a need for and substantial benefit to be derived from the implementation of traffic calming application I twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, relating to the speed on New Hope Street between Plymouth Road and Belvoir Road. And whereas a copy of the above referenced traffic calming plan is attached here too as exhibit A. And whereas the Council of Plymouth Township desires to include the above referenced traffic calming plan in the Township's list of traffic calming improvements to be installed, subject to available funding. And whereas the Council of Plymouth Township desires to adopt this resolution to approve the adoption of the above referenced traffic calming plan, now therefore be it resolved that the Council for the Township of Plymouth formally adopts the attached traffic calming plan for speed on Hope Street between Plymouth Road and Belvoir Road, duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the tenth day of November twenty twenty-five.
Any other comments from members of council before we get public comment?
I could just also add that the improvements that we are recommending.
That's what was my question to you, thank you.
Yep, are pavement markings and signage, for a total cost of one thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. And if I could do another shameless plug for our twenty twenty-six budget, our twenty twenty-six budget, draft budget also includes a new line item for traffic calming implementation, out of which this will be paid.
Thank you very much.
Mr. West, maybe you can also share some of how these, going forward, the status of some of these traffic calming policies will be communicated, so that people will know, short of coming to a meeting, there's other ways they'll find out what's happened with their request and what the outcome is.
Yeah, good question, thank you. So we have a, an email set up, trafficcalming@plymouthtownship.org, and all of these requests go through our Public Works Director. He has access to that email account, and checks them daily, and will be the point person for communicating text, interregging meetings.
Anything else to council? And so, Ms. O'Hara, would you like to tell us what your experience was like going through this? You don't have to speak, but if you wish to, I hope you do, please come to the microphone, because we have somebody who transcribes remarks for our minutes, thank you.
I was surprised by the procedure, I have to say, I, you know, I've been a resident here for fifty years, and I was surprised by the procedure. It was difficult to get a petition up. A lot of seniors live on my street, and they don't wanna open the door to someone they don't know, which is me. And I don't know them all, so that was a little bit of a challenge, but I managed to acquire enough signatures to, to get it through. I would hope that this will solve the problem, because those residents that did open the door, they couldn't wait to sign. It's a problem, and we all realize it. And what brings it to my attention is my grandchildren wanna ride their bike on the sidewalk, and I have to forbid them, because the traffic is speeding by at dangerous levels. So, I would appreciate it if you would somehow find a way. I don't know what, what, what the best solution is, you would be the experts, not me, but I would appreciate it if something could be done, so, thank you.
I don't wanna leave out that also our engineering consultants helped with this matters, as well as all of our in-house staff. Anyone else like to make any comments about this resolution and the traffic calming policy? Hearing non will now proceed to our. Vote, Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, next, we have a motion to approve a stipulation to settle. That stipulation will be read by our council, but. I will make the motion that Township Council approve the stipulation to settle regarding the tax parcel located at thirty twenty-five Chemical Road in the amount of twenty-one thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty-three cents, resulting in an overpayment to Plymouth Township. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Nelson, I'll give it to you. And if our council would please read the stipulation.
So for your consideration this evening is a tax assessment appeal stipulation that was prepared by the school district solicitor, and has already been approved by the school district and the taxpayer. So the owner of the property is S and S Investments, P A LLC, for the property at thirty twenty-five Chemical Road, known as parcel forty-nine zero 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 one seven eight six zero zero one. S and S Investments, P A LLC filed an appeal with the Board of Assessment for tax year twenty twenty-four, and moving forward. And based on the risks and hazards of litigation, the school district and the taxpayer have reached an agreement where effective January first, twenty twenty-four, the property's assessment will be reduced from ten million sixty-four thousand to six million eight hundred and sixteen thousand. Effective January first, twenty twenty-five, the assessment shall be reduced from ten million sixty-four thousand to five million nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred. And effective January first, twenty twenty-six, the assessment shall be reduced from ten million sixty-four thousand to five million five hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and twenty. And as a result of adjustments in the assessment on the subject property, there's been an overpayment in taxes to Plymouth Township. The taxes twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five in the amount of twenty-one thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty-three cents. All other aspects of the stipulation are in order.
Thank you, Mr. Glassman, are there any questions or comments from council? From members of the public? Hearing non will proceed to a roll call vote. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. That concludes our action items, we will now move on to our information items. And first item is our Police Department update by Chief Mearsiades.
Thank you. This month, and with the months to come, we've seen an expected uptick in criminal activity, especially in the commercial districts. For the most part, since we're largely a commercial district, and it's the shopping season, there's a lot more people out, and that draws, that draws criminals. So we've had much more in stolen vehicles, burglaries, robberies. So what we've done is bolster our patrols in the commercial districts that are mostly affected, to prevent that. And we'll be doing that, we usually start the beginning of October, and we carry that out through the end of the year. The only other noteworthy action is, as it's getting colder, our public assistance to the unhoused. In October, we had thirty-six incidents where we assisted, and we're trending toward two hundred and sixty-six by the end of the year. Speaking of that, tonight, Code Blue was, was declared. So our officers know, the, our Code Blue shelter that was here is now moved to a different location in Norristown, so we have that address, and anyone that needs assistance, we will transport there or anywhere else if, if they're full. So that's something that we certainly keep our eye on until we get back to the springtime and things get a little bit easier on that community. Thank you.
Very much. Our next information item by Ms. Visio, our Citizen Board vacancy announcements.
Thank you. We have vacancies currently on three citizen boards, and we always appreciate when residents step up to, to put their name up for nomination for one of the seats. There are three positions open on the Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board, one position open on the Human Relations Commission, and two positions open on our Historical Architectural Review Board. Any resident that wishes to serve on any of these citizen boards is asked to submit their resume or a letter expressing their interest to the Township Manager at seven hundred Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, P A, or via email to mwest@plymouthtownship.org.
Thank you. Next announcement of our upcoming zoning hearings by Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, the zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township will hold a public hearing on Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, commencing at seven PM in this building, the Plymouth Township Building, and for those at home, that's seven hundred Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, P A, one nine four six two, on the following applications. There's an application from Master Taekwondo Incorporated for a variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number Three Forty-two, as amended, Article Six, Section six hundred dot B. The variance requested is to allow use as a taekwondo school and related.
The variance requested is to allow use as a Taekwondo school and related martial arts school and activities in the first level of Suites 3 and 4 on the lower level of Suite 3. The property is located at 832 Germantown Pike, Suites 3 and 4 in B Residential Zoning District. There's also an application from Victoria Benedetto on an application for a variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342 as amended, Article 19, Section 1909.E. The variance requested is as follows: They are requesting a split rail fence to provide a barrier between side yard and north lane for safety purposes. The property is located at 97 West North Lane in a C Residential Zoning District. Finally, there's an application from 900 Conchahocken LLC for a special exemption, exception from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342 as amended, Article 15, Section 1502.J. The special exception requested is as follows: They are requesting a data center development using existing buildings on property consisting of 10 buildings, which comprise 1 million square feet, to be modified to contain two floors, which would result in approximately 2 million suite of space dedicated to data centers. Ancillary standby generators will be located outside of the existing buildings. Ancillary gas turbines will be located within and between the buildings. The property is located at 900 Conchahocken Road in a heavy industry zoning district. Any citizen of Plymouth Township or interested party may attend the public hearing and have an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Next, our information about our upcoming events for Poxham Recreation by Ms. Leonard.
Our holiday tree lighting is on Wednesday, December 3rd. The holiday market is indoors now at GPCC on Saturday, the 15th, this Saturday. Our winter brochure comes out December 3rd. Our holiday lights contest deadline is on December 4th. Breakfast with Santa is Saturday, December 13th. Our senior holiday potluck and trivia is Monday, December 15th. There's a preschool age candy lane celebration on Thursday, December 18th, and Extreme Eves Holiday Boot Camp on Wednesday, December 24th, and Wednesday, December 31st. And our adult basketball and volleyball leagues begin in January, and a reminder that a deadline to submit for veterans banners at GPCC Park is April 1st. And stay tuned to your email and social media for pool renovation updates.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Leonard. And then next, our final Cuny Town update, now that the crosswalk has been installed and the guide rail just is nag, nag, nag. So, our final Cuny Town update by Mr. Whitney.
Deeper details of Karen's wonderful summary of the update. On November 7th, the October-November update was posted to the township website. In regards to the crosswalk, on November 5th, 2025, Carol Engineering submitted final payment approval to the township for the pedestrian signal. There are a few outstanding punch list items to be completed in the coming weeks. On October 16th, the township manager and staff met virtually with representatives from PennDOT to review matters previously forwarded to them, including the pedestrian signal, guide rail, and sidewalks. Staff reviewed the township's recently adopted traffic calming policy with PennDOT. PennDOT was unable to provide an update on the status of the guide rail as the staff person was not on the call. On October 21st, the township manager received a response from PennDOT regarding the status of the guide rail, but the response did not provide adequate details. The email included a request from PennDOT staff for the guide rail staff person to respond to the township manager with more details. On October 28th, township manager responded to the email asking an update on the guide rail, as the requested follow-up was never received. Township manager received an email reply that a staff person would call that afternoon or the following afternoon. Township manager provided suggested times for the call on each day. No follow-up call was received. And on November 6th, the township manager again emailed PennDOT for an update on the guide rail.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. And then, next information item, it's that time of year to begin our snow announcement by Ms. Leonard.
Residents are asked to remember the following to get through the winter season safely. Use off-street parking when snow is predicted. When you park your car in the driveway, there's less snow to shovel. On-street parking, where no off-street parking is available, is only permitted on one side of the street. In an odd year, parking is permitted on the odd number side of the street. Residents are reminded that it is unlawful to park or abandon a car on any street, any time within 12 hours after a snowfall of three inches or more where off-street parking exists. Any motor vehicle parked, stalled, incapable of moving under its own power, or left unattended upon, or, I'm sorry, left unattended upon any public street or highway in the township, at any time within 12 hours after snowfall of three inches or more has occurred, may be removed, removed or towed to another location by the police department. Do not park near storm drains, so crews can clear snow and ice to avoid flooding from the melting runoff. Vehicles parked otherwise are subject to removal at the owner's expense. Think safety. Never approach moving snow removal equipment. Just because you can see the driver doesn't mean he can see you. We try to keep our crews fresh and rested, but extended weather emergencies can mean long hours for township employees. Please keep children and pets off the streets as much as possible. When shoveling your driveway, pile snow to the right. This will prevent the plow from covering your driveway opening again. Property owners are required to clear their sidewalks at least 30 inches wide within 36 hours after the snow stops. Don't shovel or plow snow into the street. The plows will just move it back onto your driveway or sidewalk. If there's a fire hydrant by your home, consider adopting it. You know where it is. If it's obscured by snow, fire companies responding to emergencies may not find it. Clearing the snow from the hydrant helps protect you and your neighbors.
All right, Ms. Leonard, and with temperatures dropping below freezing tonight? Let's hope snow doesn't come later. We're going to move back up to one of our main presentation items for tonight, and that is a presentation regarding the final 2026 budget, and I will now turn it over to our township manager and the town chairman.
Thank you. We are excited to present the final budget, and this is a culmination of a lot of work with not just Kell and I, or Finance Director and I, but everyone, including council, and I really appreciate everyone's participation in this huge budget process, including department directors, staff, council, everyone involved. And so, we're really excited to present these, this final public presentation to you tonight, which is a culmination of all of that experience, and it includes all of the recommendations and proposed increases in funding options as presented last Wednesday. So this is the final step, and at the conclusion of this, we are proposing that we move to advertise this budget by next week, at which point we will post it to the website along with these presentations. Anyone who can contact me or tell me any questions, and we are on track for a council consideration for adoption at the December 8th of this year. Without further ado, I turn it over to town chairman.
Thanks. Okay. So as Matt mentioned, this is our final budget presentation for the 2026 budget. As mentioned before, this is more of a summary of last week's presentation. If you want to, there's more of a detailed presentation online right now, if you wanted to view that. So this is just going to be discussing what we discussed last week, but more of a summary. As mentioned last week, this is, this process started back in July and August with department heads submitting their budgets to me, and then meeting with Matt and I to discuss what actually needs to be in the budget and the actual expenses that need to be in there. As mentioned before, we did not include anything that we did not feel necessary in this budget. So after we did all those meetings, we met a couple of weeks ago in small group meetings, three in all, to go over a more detailed presentation of the budget. And then from there, last week, we had our workshop presentation, which brought us to this meeting today, and then hopefully, December 8th, we will have the budget adopted. So as we went through this process, we had a couple of obstacles we had to go through, same as last year, rising costs, continued inflation, and some economic constraints. And also, as we see a lot with our capital projects, there's aging infrastructure, vehicle fleet, and equipment that needs to be replaced. So again, we're just reviewing all the township funds tonight, about 12 in all. So we're going to start with the general fund, which is the main operating fund, and which includes our main revenues such as EIT, real estate tax, business privilege tax, and also includes our main department expenditures such as the administration, police, and public works budget. The main thing you'll be seeing tonight, as we went over before, is that we're going to be charging the healthcare to the appropriate departments, rather than having it all in our, charged to a specific health and welfare fund. So as we move along tonight, you'll see a lot of the increased expenses after that. In all, it's not an actual increase in expenses, it's just a reallocation of the expenses. Also go over the two other main operating funds we have for the township, which are the community center and sewer operating funds, and also the main projects such as in the capital reserve, parks capital, as well as the sewer capital and community capital So for this slide, this is how we are, how the budget currently is presented. This shows that we don't have a tax increase currently. The real estate tax was 4.9 million last year, and it continues to be that this year. Beginning fund balance projected to start 2026 is a little over 10 million. As mentioned, real estate tax, we're not expect, we are not showing an increase on this specific slide. EIT, we're expecting it around 8.9 million, and that comes from Berkheimer, that projection. Business privilege tax, 8.7 million. Solid waste disposal fees, 1.2 million. LST, 1.1 million, which is another, a projection we get from Berkheimer. And then, all the other revenues combined, about 5.9 million, which comes to 30.8 million. For expenditures wise, we're expecting around 31.6 million, which we'll get into in the next couple of slides, and then transfers out to the capital projects fund, which includes the capital reserve, parks capital fund, as well as the community center capital projects. Transfer out 1.4 million to the community center fund, as well as transfers to our fire companies for capital expenses of 230,000. And all these total expenses and allocations come to 36.2 million, which gives us a projected ending fund balance of 4.7 million, which is below the recommended minimum fund balance of 5.3 million, which is about two months' worth of operating expenses. So this is just a summary of the departmental expenses in the general fund, the main expenses that come out of the general fund. As I mentioned before, again, a lot of these increases you see here is due to charging healthcare to the specific departments, and we're doing this again because we want to get a better idea and understanding of how much each department costs. The main changes, increased expenses in the general fund this year, the main one is the MMO increase, and this is for both the police and non-uniform MMO, the minimal municipal obligation that we have to fund for our pension. Police increased about $540,000, or 1.9 million in total, and non-uniform increased 260,000 or 730,000 in total. Healthcare increases are roughly 5% across the board, 4% for personnel increases across the board. And moving from the departments, we saw about a large increase of administration, it's 65,000, and that's due to planning costs for the Montgomery County Planning Commission, and also for zoning costs. IT is up roughly five, is, there's an increase in expenses of IT for 50,000, and that's mainly because of hardware and software increased costs. Police is about 375,000 in all, and that's due to many differences going on in next year's budget. One thing is overtime is increasing, and that's because of a lot of the events that will be happening in 2026, such as the 250th Anniversary for America, the All-Star Game in Philly, as well as the FIFA World Cup coming to this region. And other things that are increasing next year are for vehicles, planning on having about six new different vehicles being replaced for next year, and also about $165,000 in expenses that go towards having a full-time social worker, having an emergency management services, that's going to be a new budget line item for next year, and also having a new community policing unit and drone program scheduled to be for next year. For public works, as I mentioned before, a lot of the public works expenses are due to materials and supplies increasing due to inflation, so you see that across the board. And as you move down through the table, you'll see one thing that sticks out is the administration budget going down 1.8 million, and that is due to, this is where we used to charge pension costs, we're now also doing the similar with pension costs with what we did with healthcare, and charging that to specific departments. And also, this is where we would charge social security and Medicare taxes. So now it's being allocated across all departments. So the bottom line, it comes down to a 20.9% increase, but again, that is largely due to allocating healthcare and pension costs across the board. When you take out the healthcare being reallocated back to the general fund, the actual increase is only 6% across the board. Also, transfers out is decreasing about 9.1 million, and that is largely due to not transferring money to the health and welfare fund for the healthcare for 2026.
I could just also chime in, the healthcare increase, shameless plug for our healthcare provider, Delaware Health Trust, 5%, which is really good. And similarly, I have some colleagues who are not in the health trust, and they this year are experiencing 13% to 15% increases in healthcare, so, I like that, is one of our benefits of being a member of Delaware Health Trust.
So as I mentioned on one of the previous slides, we do fall below the ending fund balance projection that is recommended to have for, to have a stabilized fund balance. This real estate tax recommendation is moving the real estate tax mileage from 2.1 to 2.8. This mileage will get us an ending fund balance of 5.8 million, which is roughly 500,000 above what we need to be, but it gives us a solid fund balance. This would charge a taxpayer of an assessed property value of 180,000, about $126 extra next year, or $10.50 more per month. This does not include the fire service fee increase. The fire service fee recommendation is moving from the current 0.845 mils to 1 mil exactly. What this mil would get is a 6.5% increase for both fire companies, which is relatively the same as what was the increase for last year. This will also increase the capital contributions from what is currently 115,000 for each company to $200,000 for each company, and this is much needed for the companies due to their extensive vehicle replacement list that is going to be coming up in the next several years to replace. It includes no new employee for the Plymouth Fire Company, and with moving the real estate tax or the fire service fee mileage from 8.45 to 1 mil, for a taxpayer of $180,000 assessed property value, it's roughly 27, $28 a year, or $2.33 a month. So with both those recommendations in place, the new real estate tax revenue would be projected at about 2 point, I'm sorry, 6.2 million, and the new ending fund balance would be roughly, as I said on the two slides ago, 5.8 million, which is more than the recommended fund balance, but it is a stable, solid fund balance to have. So the summary of the proposed tax increases, the current bill for a property assessed at $180,000 is $530 a year. With the new bill, it would be 684,000, I'm sorry, $684 a year. It's about $153 extra a year. It's about a hundred fifty three dollars extra a year, or twelve dollars and eighty three cents a month. This slide just shows a comparison of the local or neighboring municipalities that are comparable to Plymouth Township. As you can see, even with the increase, the tax increase proposed, we are still lower than the other municipalities when you consider what services we provide. And also, the, I'm sorry, the services we provide and the military itself.
Just pause on this for a minute, because Lynn Visio told me last week that this is her famous presentation. If you just look at what we get compared to everybody around us, and when we pay this, you know, potential six hundred eighty four dollars, that includes our trash pickup. You look at the people, the townships around us, and they either don't include it in the taxes because they have to go out and privately contract with waste removal services for their own trash pickup. And they have to deal with whether those services are good or not good. And other townships around us, you look at their municipal tax bill, but they have an extra item for picking up your trash. We don't do that. All of it's included in your one tax bill from the township. So there's no extra. So when you look at the total bill that other municipality residents are paying, the total bill plus whatever trash service they have, extra item, private contracting, we are the best bargain-going in the entire area for what I consider to be really premium services. Just wanted to pause so you guys could have a moment to take a look at this slide. I actually did a screenshot of it earlier. Sorry about that, Kellen, but I just, I agree with Lynn. My first or second favorite slide.
I would just add, sort of as a one-liner, I mean, the reason I love this slide so much is because it really validates how hard in Plymouth we work to do two things, to respect and to keep taxes low, and to provide some of the highest quality services of any municipality in our area. And I think this slide is just a perfect depiction of how hard we work at those two things.
All right, Kellen, you may continue.
And like you, like you said, the, this, this slide shows for those municipalities who do not have trash pickup included on their bill or as an extra on their bill, I assume about four hundred fifty dollars a year, just from personal experience knowing what a trash bill costs per quarter from a private hauler, being about a hundred ten, a hundred fifteen thousand, I mean, a hundred ten, a hundred fifteen dollars a quarter. And also the fact that you don't get the free items picked up. You have to call ahead, schedule it, and then you'll pay about an extra twenty five, fifty dollar per pickup fee. So off of that, just wanted to highlight the services that Plymouth Township does provide that is somewhat unique for this specific township. As we talked about, Public Works Department has a sanitation department that offers twice-a-week trash pickup, free bulk item pickup, as I mentioned, not, a private hauler does not include that in there, that's an extra cost. And also leaf collection, branch pickup and shipping. Another couple of services, the Public Works Department.
Have electronic recycling free too. You can just come to the township shed, Public Works Shed in the back during normal business hours, and you can drop off anything that has a plug and a wire.
So some other items that Public Works Department does as well, that includes highways and streets, so snowplowing, obviously. But they also repair the storm sewer inlets. That's something that could be contracted out, which would be a much higher cost, but we keep it in-house with our guys doing it. We also have in-house mechanics. Again, it would be much more of a cost to send it out to a repair shop every time something's broke. And also do our own road maintenance. Also have a full-service police department. We have fifty full-time officers, eight non-uniform employees. And we also have several part-time employees mainly in the dispatch unit of the police department. We also have a K-9 unit, which is a unique thing to have in this area. As I mentioned before, we're also having a couple of new programs this year too with the police department, as the drone programs being started up, as well as the emergency management services. And we also offer a community policing unit as well. We also have a community center, which every municipality has. We have stuff included in there, we have a pool room, which includes two different pools, a leisure and a lap pool. We also have a sauna and a whirlpool. There's also a fitness center in the community center. And then some other facilities at the community center, basketball and volleyball courts, an activity center, central room rentals for parties and birthdays. And then we also have outdoor pavilion and amphitheater, soccer and baseball fields, bocce courts, and a sand volleyball court. And also, mentioned Plymouth Township Fire Services, we have two companies, Harmerville and Plymouth. Harmerville has three, I'm sorry, three full, full-time firefighters, Plymouth Fire Company has two. Harmerville has two fire stations, Plymouth Fire Company has one fire station. And this is all voluntary services, volunteer services provided by the fire companies. If we didn't have these services, we would have to have a full-time firefighting unit, and those costs would be astronomical for the township. So having these and keeping these services as volunteer is crucial for the township.
Very necessary, because you can't take a truck out unless you have at least one person on the truck, operating all of that. And no firefighter can go into a burning building or dangerous situation unless there's another firefighter with them, for obvious safety reasons. So we really depend a lot on volunteers, and you just can't say enough. How much, many of them live right here in our community, and they really give their time, and their safety, so.
And like I said, having a full-service fire company with full-time employees, the, the cost would just be astronomical for a township to absorb. And the final slide for the general fund is just a breakdown of what the Plymouth Township Tax Bill is.
My favorite slide.
So it's broken down between the school district, county, and township, which is, makes up the real estate tax bill, you know, the total real estate tax bill. The school district right now is at about twenty-six and a half mils, or seventy-five percent of your school, or seventy-four percent of your tax bill. The county's at five point six four mils, or roughly sixteen percent of the tax bill. And the township, out of, if the increase were to go to three point eight mils, would be ten percent of the tax bill. So in all, the tax bill would accumulate to thirty five point nine three seven mils, or almost sixty five hundred dollars for a property assessed at a hundred eighty thousand dollars. So that's the last slide on the general fund, if there was any questions. Okay, so the next fund is the retiree healthcare fund. This is the fund I was talking about earlier, which is where all the healthcare used to be charged to. As you see on this slide, the 2025 budget and the 2025, 2025 projected amounts, we have a transfer in coming from the general fund roughly five million dollars. That's not gonna happen next year. This is gonna be specifically for retiree healthcare fund, the healthcare expenses. The healthcare will now be charged specifically to the general fund and any other department that is necessary. So the revenues for this is mainly going to be through our OPEB trust fund transfer of about one point four million. And then we also have the expenses for each of our retirees, which either they're getting paid through a dividend or through Aetna, which is the Medicaid, Medicare expenses. And recently, just wanted to make a quick update on this slide, and there's gonna be one other update too. We got the, a more up-to-date cost for the Medicare. It came to about ten percent higher than was projected. So I was gonna propose to transfer one point five million out of the OPEB trust fund instead of one point four to cover for those expenses. That's just a, a quick tweak on this slide.
Retiree healthcare, which, if that happens, we have bigger problems. All right. We verified and validated with our actuary and our plan administrator, and we recommend that we be using this fund. I just wanted to say thank you to my predecessors, my predecessor's predecessor. We're having the foresight to set that account up, and we are being able, we're now in a position to utilize that and to help offset our, it would have been even a higher tax increase if we did not have this fund to draw back. Thank you to the past, and looking forward to the future. And this is just a way for us to start using this fund as it was designed. We used to use it for all health insurance. All that stuff would just be transferred in here, and we'd just pay one bill out of it. It's not really the spirit of this kind of fund. And so we are focusing this fund just on post-retirement health care. So that's why, when I look at the, the, this year's budget, we have to look at both the general fund and this retiree healthcare fund, because those two always worked in tandem.
And just to be clear, on the extra hundred thousand dollars coming from the OPEB trust, that's not coming through real estate taxes or anything. That's something we already had stored away, it's just gonna be an extra transfer this year, a little bit extra of a transfer for next year, I'm sorry. So next fund is the community center operating fund. This is gonna be a little bit of a different scenario in 2026 due to the pool pump room being renovated. So we're not gonna have our true revenues and the true expenses gonna be seen for 2026. As you can see on the revenue slide, we're expecting a decrease of roughly a quarter of a million, and that's due to the pool being closed for roughly a quarter of the year. Again, we'll get a better sense of what the revenues will be in 2027 once the pool is reopened. And that's also another reason why you see the transfer increasing roughly six hundred thousand, and it's to cover the, the pool not being open for that couple of months for, in beginning of 2026. Expenses, the administration is similar to what was happening in the general fund. We're now allocating the healthcare and pension across all departments, where originally this was all expensed out of the administration. So now it's being charged to each department in the community center. And like I said, this is going to be, we're gonna have a much better understanding of what the pool, what, what the expenses will be for 2027, right now dealing with the pool being closed. So the next budget is the community center capital budget. For this, there's really no revenues that occur, it's all through a transfer from the general fund, and we're expecting that to be two hundred fifty thousand for next year. In summary, for the projects in 2026, we're expecting about three hundred fifty five thousand dollars worth of expenses. And then from 2027 through 2030, those four years, we're projecting one point seven million. Sewer operating fund is the next fund. We're proposing a nine percent rate increase, and this is mainly to cover the Plymouth Interceptor project that will be going on next year. As you can see, a nine percent increase equates to roughly six dollars for, for the first seven thousand gallons, where that's the flat rate of seventy one fifty six. And just did a comparison to, to other municipalities, neighboring municipalities and a private company in the area. As shown in the table below, we still have the lowest quarterly billing rates for a consumer using ten thousand five hundred gallons. Even though the rate is gonna be increased nine percent, residents with low water will remain at their current rate of eighty four dollars and fifty cents. And again, this rate increase is to cover the Plymouth Interceptor project for 2026. So just to touch the revenues for the sewer operating fund. The main is, main is, main revenue is gonna be through sewer collections, again, it's gonna be a nine percent increase, which will be about four point one million in revenue. And some other revenues we get through the sewer fund are interest and charges for service. But again, the main is the sewer collections. We're also now expecting to transfer in one point five million from the general fund, and that is due to us going, the township will have enough cash to cover the interceptor phase, Plymouth Interceptor this year, or we wouldn't have had in 2025. Expense-wise for the sewer fund, we're expecting a slight increase in the administration side. Again, that's due to reallocating healthcare and pension. We're expecting a little bit of an increase in buildings, and this is due to the maintenance and equipment replacement for pump stations. Again, due to inflationary and economic constraints, those costs keep increasing. We do expect a decrease for sewer treatment to the East Norton Plymouth Whitpaint Joint Sewer Authority Plant, and this is due to 2024 being a dry year. We're expecting an increase in sewer treatments to other municipalities due to their rates increasing. They bill us for those sewers that are in our municipality. And this is, again, due to their rates increasing in 2024. And then capital contributions for both plants are just going to be allocated to the sewer capital fund moving forward. And that's everything for the sewer operating fund. So sewer capital, again, the, the main revenue source here is through developer impact fees. We're expecting maybe a hundred forty five thousand dollars in developer impact fees. The main financing source is through the sewer operating fund of five point six million dollars, that's a transfer in. And again, the Plymouth Interceptor Phase Three is the main project for next year at four point four million. We're expecting total capital costs of six point four million for 2026. And moving forward through twenty seven, through, twenty twenty seven through twenty thirty, we're expecting roughly five point one million in capital project costs. The next fund is the capital reserve fund, which is our main capital project fund. The main revenue we receive here is through interest. We may also receive grants as well, but we're not projecting any for next year. The main financing is through a transfer in of, from the general fund of two point three million dollars. And that's to cover the projects that will total three point six million for next year. The major project next year is to cover the remaining construction for the firehouse of two million. The remaining projects are mainly either renovations for the buildings, equipment replacement or vehicle replacements, or IT infrastructure upgrades. And again, those projects total roughly three point six million for next year. And then for 2027 through 2030, we're expecting roughly five point eight million dollars in capital project expenses. So the next budget is the Parks Capital Fund, which is just for the, the parks in the township. Main revenue source is through developer impact fees. And again, if we receive grants or donations, we would also use that, those would also be revenues, but we're not expecting that for next year. And the other major financing source is through the transfers in of the general fund for three hundred fifty thousand. The three major projects for next year are the Allenwood Park Basketball Court Coating for ten thousand. for ten thousand, East Plymouth Valley Park dugout replacements for Fields One and Four at two hundred fifty thousand, JFK Park playground replacement for three hundred fifty thousand, totaling six hundred ten thousand. And then in 2027 through 2030, we're projecting two million dollars worth of capital upgrades to the parks. Highway aid fund, this is a fund that we receive money through the state. We're expecting roughly four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars through state allocation, and this is based off the population and the miles of highway that we have, miles of roads and highway that we have in the township. That's how the calculation is done for that state allocation. So whatever we really receive in state allocation, we spend throughout the year. For next year, there's going to be, the main increase is going to be for a four hundred thousand dollar wheel loader and three snow plows and a salt spreader. That's in the equipment replacement and repair line item. And then we're also expecting to spend about fifty thousand dollars for thermoplastic paint for the streets. So more outfall. Again, this is another fund where whatever money we receive, we spend for next year. We're expecting possibly fifty thousand dollars for developer impact fees. Whatever money we receive from them, we'll spend on anything to repair the storm sewer outlets, storm sewer inlet, sorry, or anything with MS four related costs. The final two budgets, there's no expenses for next year. It's Act Two-O-Nine, Area One and Two funds. These are traffic impact, these are traffic improvement funds that are funded through traffic impact fees, depending on where the developer, depending on where the development happens. As I said, there's no expected expenses for next year, but we're looking forward into the future to see if we can use this fund for any type of traffic-related costs. So that wraps up the budget for, budget presentation for 2026. Any questions?
Questions for Kellen or Matt? It was a great presentation, Kellen. Thank you. Very easy for me to follow, and that's saying a lot. Make a quick comment.
I, I, I know often when people watch this played back, they wonder how, how is it that council could sit there and not ask a single question with a budget like this proposed? So just to reiterate something that Matt and Kellen shared previously, members of council in, in pairs spent hours going through the budget with our township manager, with our department heads. We spent another hour last week at our workshop going through the budget. So I just want everyone to rest assured that we're not just looking at this and making quick decisions. That council has had plenty of opportunity, both to look at this budget, to ask questions, to engage with our township manager, to engage with Kellen, to engage with our department heads, so. I just thought that was worth commenting, because I know sometimes people look at our meetings and think this is the only time we've engaged with the budget or with the topic at hand.
A lot of questions back at people. We appreciate all of our staff who listen to us and handle our questions. What matters to quote, do you have questions about that? Well, thank you both. And, uh. Next month, we will be drafting the budget. If there's anyone at home who's either watching this in live stream, we'll do, it's, it's time between now and next month to look at it. I would be welcome to come to the public meeting in December. I believe this is the second Monday of the month, where we would, are welcome to learn and after draft this close budget.
And just to reiterate what I stated earlier tonight, the next step will be to force to advertise this budget, and once we make that advertisement in the newspaper, a copy of the final draft budget will be posted to the township website, available for review and comment to either meeting. Kellen, along with these budget presentations.
So anyone else can take a screenshot of anything they saw tonight, right?
Watch on their own computer or their phone.
Oh, Lynn's favorite slide or my favorite slide? Anything else from Kellen or from Matt? All right, we will now move to public comment, if you have anything to say. We just asked that you come to the podium so that the person who transcribes for the minutes will be able to hear you. Just give us your name, and we don't need your exact street address, just whether or not you live in Plymouth. We let anyone comment, but it's, it's always helpful if we know that it's someone in Plymouth and we can, you know, make a difference, so. You're welcome to come up if you have anything to say.
First of all, thank you very much. My name is Yayaati Patel. I'm a resident of one-twenty-three Archbishop Drive. And today I am here to express my anger, frustration, unhappiness, and some monetary loss happened due to the negligence of the, your code and township code enforcement department supervisor Brad, as well as your paving contractor Glaxo. And I have segments of event that I want to present, and also want to keep this one for the record. I'll have all the exhibit to go along with that. So what happened, there sometime in the middle of September, township contractor Glaxo, Glaxo completed milling and paving operation of the community street in the September. After that, I decided to replace my deteriorating curb and apron to improve the aesthetic appeal of my house. I called township code enforcement department inspector Brad Crenky, who, I'm sorry, I couldn't, who came, who came to advise me if I need to replace just the depressed curb or both the curb as well as the apron to satisfy the township requirement. He advised just to depress the curb and provided me, when I asked him, he provided me the code, code of enforcement requirement or the specification, so that I can float the specification to all the contractor for kind of getting the quotation from there. He gave me the specification sheet. He also gave me the list of preferred township preferred contractor, and that is Exhibit One and Two. From that, I chose contractor Al Fitpatrick from the list of, and signed the contract with him. That is Exhibit Number Three. According to this contract, he was supposed to satisfy all the requirement of township. So he started the work. Brad was called after preparation and forming for the inspection before pouring the concrete. Brad did not measure the depth of, of the curb, that is required twelve inches as per the specification. He just put his leg and said, "Al, you are good to go." He did not, he also ignored the most important critical item of installing two rebar on either side of the curb to reinforce the new concrete with the old concrete. And that is the most important part, part of the specification, that he did not, and that is required for, to ensure the tensile strength as well as the integrity reinforcement of the new curb to the old curb. So, and he continued to brag how good the, his contractor is, rather than inspecting whether he's doing the right job or not. Brad also allowed Al Fitpatrick to do another job in my neighborhood to replace two four-by-four square of concrete walkway without issuing the permit in advance, because my neighbor, he approached Al since the concrete truck was there, and Al immediately went, left my work, and went to the another place to start working over there. So, so another thing happened while the concrete pouring was just finished, Tom, who is the supervisor of the paving company Glaxo, came around three-thirty PM and asked to, for sealing the street to the curb. I requested to wait a couple of days for the concrete curb for hardening. He left, but as soon as I left the house around six PM, he came back and removed all the barricades, protective plastic stitching, and applied black sealer on the top surface of my just completed curb. And I have that, that is Exhibit Number Four, but it is all the pictures. It is on my phone. If the township is asking for the pictures, I will provide that. I called Glaxo supervisor, who refused to talk and said I should contact township. I called Chris Luciano, the director of public works, who visited my property to assess the situation. However, he continued praising Glaxo worker, saying he did not do anything wrong. He blamed, instead of that, he blamed me by telling me that I'm not supposed to replace the curb within twelve months after the street paving is done. This doesn't make any sense. Paving of the street has nothing to do with curb. Curtain can be replaced at any time in any street condition. I asked him why your inspector Brad issued the work permit even though he was aware that the street paving just done. So Chris was telling that I'm not supposed to do that. Then I asked, I asked Chris, "Why then your inspector issued the work permit to do that?" When I asked Brad, "Why did you issue, why did he issue the permit?", he said he has been working with the township for eleven years, and he is not aware of this guideline. So I don't know, one of the two persons is lying, either Brad or Chris. I called Chris, I also called Matt, and then both of them, they assure me that the township will take care of the issue and will hire Al Fitpatrick to remove excessive sealer and improve the aesthetic look of the curb. Al never showed up on the job. Instead, he sent his brother Paul, who concluded that scrapping the sealer will expose the aggregate and will reduce the bonding integrity and may cause cracking as the time passes. Since then, I made sixteen calls, fourteen text messages to Al. I have all message logging on my phone. I can provide that if the township is asking for that. And I also wrote the detail later to Chris dated October twenty-sixth, which is in Exhibit Number Six. As of now, I have not received, I have received zero response from the township. When I complained again, your contractor, Glaxo and Al Fitpatrick, both Chris and Brad took their side and praised their work instead of neutrally looking at the homeowner complaint and find the solution. The negligence of code enforcement, Inspector Brad, who allowed and approved his recommended contractor Al Fitpatrick to install curb without enforcing the township code of installing rebar on both sides, which resulted into the permanent deficiency as it reduces the tensile strength and may cause structural failure, twisting and cracking due to the, cracking down the road. Now, I have Exhibit Number Seven, I have, it says, I have copied from the structure engineering handbook that it, it, it requires to have, rebars are required to install to increase the spintal strength and to, to, to fix the reinforcing to concrete. It may cause tripping hazard while both my wife and I, being senior citizens, seventy-five years old, and plan to live here for a lifelong. In the, in the lieu of above permanent deficiency caused by the negligence of township inspector Brad and township recommended contractor Al Fitpatrick, as well as Glaxo, I am asking the township for a monetary compensation of five hundred dollars and a relief from all responsibilities.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. We will take a look at this, and it seems that our staff is well aware and already working on this, so appreciate you coming tonight and letting us know your concerns.
So I was told by Matt that your, the township is not working on this. So that's, that's the stance of township?
I don't know where it stands. We can certainly discuss it with them. As far as your request for compensation, that's a legal matter that our solicitor will have to.
So do I expect anything against this presentation? Do I expect anything in writing from township?
That will be reviewed and the township sends anything in writing, that will be sent to the, the next U.A.S., if the township is inclined to respond to the allegations that these, this document has been brought.
Okay. And another, another thing is that this afternoon, I made several phone, phone calls before, but this afternoon, all of a sudden, Matt called me, and when I started talking that, "Al, your preferred contractor has not performed, met the requirement of township", and suddenly, all of a sudden, in order to protect the employees of township, Matt simply changed his position. He says, "It's not a specification, it's a guideline." It is very clearly says it's a specification, it is guideline. There is a difference between specification and guideline. Specifics are very detailed mandated with the detailed information. The guideline is simply recommendation. So installing rebar is a specification of Plymouth Township, and it is not the guideline. I wanted to make it clear, because I have the evidence. That is in Exhibit Number Three.
I just want to say, will you say something by?
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make any comments tonight? Thanks, everyone, for coming. This meeting is now adjourned.